It's, there we go. Awesome. Okay, thank you. So, um, these are the topics we're gonna cover, but before I get into that, I just wanna say hello to everyone and, um, welcome you to this meeting. Um, we are in some very, uh, different, difficult, unprecedented time. And before we get started, I just wanna tell you all just how proud I am of all of you, students and parents and families included, because, um, it's just been very, um, difficult for everyone. So we really appreciate you all taking time out of your day to meet with us because we've got some really, um, important things to cover today, um, some of which, uh, I am actually really excited to present to you all. So, um, we're saving the best for last, all the information about graduation. Uh, so I'm gonna go through a lot of, um, just kinda, just some housekeeping items, um, things that you all might have had questions about. I'm sure many of you know already that we already had a town hall with the seniors, with the students, so that we could alleviate some of their stresses immediately. So hopefully they've told you a good portion of this information already. But we, um, the reason that we waited so long to have this meeting with you all as parents is because Chicago Public School has been extremely slow at sending out, um, information and guidance to principals and to schools. Um, and when I say slow, that's not throwing shade. It's because of the fact that everything has to go through the law department. So any, um, uh, approvals for our virtual graduations had to go through the law department. Any, um, information for allowing students to come in, to come pick up their items out of their lockers, had to go through the law department. So there's been a lot of red tape, um, and they've been very, um, conscious of, uh, people's health and people's safety. And so that's what's taken so long. So I, uh, in advance, I appreciate your patience for, um, us getting this information to you. So, um, without further ado, uh, let's get started. Have I covered everything, senior team?
Yep.
All right, okay, so let's get started, thank you. So the grades and grading, uh, the seniors, the students already know this, and we hope that we have alleviated some of their stress. Um, just to recap for you, if you recall when we had the school closure on Monday, March 16th, um, we were given a day to whip up this, um, online learning as a city. And, um, you know, it, we, we tried, we did our best. Um, but the students were told, you know, that the, the grades don't count for anything or that the grades can't hurt their, the homework can't hurt their grades. So we didn't really get a lot of engagement. Then we had spring break, and then when we returned from spring break, we were given more guidance from Chicago Public Schools that said, yes, they will get grades, yes, they can improve their grade, um, and yes, their grade can also go down. So what I'm gonna do is just very briefly go over this with you because none of our seniors' grades are gonna go down. We're all gonna do well, we're all gonna work with each other, and we're all gonna get through this together. So, um, essentially, I've broken it down for you that, uh, students have to attend at least one live session or at least send one email to their teacher per week to check in with their teachers. That's the minimum, right? Many of you seniors are doing more than that, and we greatly, greatly, greatly appreciate that. But from the grading policy from Chicago Public Schools, the terms that they use are engage with teacher. So moreover than your grade, we're also concerned that that, your families are, are healthy, are well, um, that you have everything that you need. Chicago Public Schools has shared with us a lot of resources that we can share with you all if you need anything. And for the most part, most of our check-ins have been making sure that your health and well-being are, are good. So, um, so you have to engage with your teacher, and engaging with your teacher can be through the live chat, through those virtual lessons, or email. Um, and it counts as activity and engagement. Is it possible for you to never go to a live session, never chat, never email, but turn in all of your assignments? Yes, but we also want to see you, hear from you, make sure that you're okay. So, um, if you didn't get a passing grade for any of your assignments, um, and you attended the sessions, um, it, it says right here, you'll be making, make, you, even if you do not get a passing grade for the assignments, attending the sessions will be enough to make sure you earned credit for the semester, provided you had a passing grade in quarter three. So if you were passing third quarter and you've been engaging with your teachers this whole time, you are going to pass. So, um, if anybody has any specific questions, you can reach out to your teachers, but that's where we're at with grades and grading. I've got one more slide to reassure you that, again, we just need to hear from you. We know that a lot's happening. As long as you check in with one teacher or staff member, we're all communicate, we're all communicating with each other. We wanna make sure that you're okay. So there are some emails examples. Um, as seniors, um, some of your work is a little bit more rigorous, and you are expected to do a little bit more. But again, communicate with us and we will help you and we will support you. Teachers, do you have anything that you wanna add?
I think checking the email is most important, um, for you to do, uh, especially with seniors and with all of our things. That's how we are communicating to you. And I know that as senior, um, as students, you get overwhelmed by how many emails you have. So I think just helping out, and this is a great skill for next year because, you know, college is gonna be very similar. Um, setting up a time to do it. Uh, I know a lot of you have it on your phone, but like, don't check it on your phone if you can't do what you need to do. Because then you read it and you never go back to it, right? So like, be mindful of it and sit down when you're like, ready to knock some of the work out. Um, so just like with planning, I think that that's most important.
Thank you, and yes, this is the lesson for next year. Um, those of you that we're gonna, are gonna be in college, those of you that are gonna have jobs, you're gonna have multiple teachers, you might have multiple supervisors with whom you have to communicate with regularly. So those of you who that have been doing, who, who have been doing that, keep up the good work, um, and just need to continue doing that next year and beyond. So, thank you. Are there any questions in the chat, or are we good?
We're good.
Okay, next please. Thank you. So Learn, Plan, Succeed, I'm handing that one over to you, Ms. Campbell.
So, um, Learn, Plan, Succeed, as most of you know, it's our, um, it's a graduation requirement. It is not being waived by the district, it is still mandatory. And failure for a student to complete Learn, Plan, Succeed will result in them not graduating. Now, um, we have a huge number of our students that are already done. We're close to being done, we only have a handful that we're waiting for, so that's great. But this needs to be done by May 29th because there are, um, certain steps that needs to happen. And, uh, Ms. Hannah has to upload some things, and we need to make sure that the evidence, so you say what your plan is and where you're going, and then you upload evidence that supports that plan. And we need to make sure that the evidence matches the plan, and then it's adequate evidence. So the evidence has to include your name on it where it's visible. Um, evidence can be a acceptance letter, or it can be a, um, financial aid letter. But that needs to be done by Friday. Uh, tomorrow, I know me and Ms. Castillo have let, um, we've been in contact with our students that need to continue to do this and that need to get this done. But, um, tomorrow, we will be reaching out again, and I will be looping in the parents that I have the information for so that you can, um, so that you can be aware also, but this needs to be done by Friday.
Awesome, thank you. And all the seniors know how to submit that?
There's a video posted, we have a video that's posted to support them with doing so on Google Classroom, um, so that they can watch it step by step.
Yeah, and, um, in addition to that, there are actually two videos. So there's the one for the Learn, Plan, Succeed survey, and then there's one for requesting your final transcript as well. Those two things do go hand in hand, um, because you need to do both of those things before the end of the year. So both of those videos are assigned on Google Classroom. Um, if you need, or if you want, we can repost them as needed as well.
Excellent, thank you. Okay, and May 29th is Friday, yeah?
Yep.
Okay, all right, so then here are some important deadlines. And again, we're recording this and we will share this with you, or you can take a screenshot right now if you'd like. Um, these are the, uh, important dates and deadlines. So the Chicago Public School deadlines are the first three. The Learn, Plan, Succeed Naviance Survey, the Learn, Plan, Succeed Evidence, and the Senior Exit Questionnaire, which is the SEQ, and your final transcript request. Those are due by 5/29, April, I'm sorry, May 29th, that's this Friday. And the Learn, Plan, Succeed, y'all, is a Chicago Public School requirement. So if we're doing all of this work for your graduation, but you don't turn that in this Friday, you're, you're not gonna be able to participate because you won't be graduating. So please make sure that you do that, because that's Chicago Public Schools' deadline. Um, so reach out to Ms. Campbell or Ms. Castillo for more information. Um, these videos, there are these deadlines here. These are all for our, um, virtual graduation that I'm gonna speak to in a little bit. So, um, I might come back to this because you don't know what these things are yet, but we'll come back to it. Next slide, please. So, again, in case we didn't say it 5/29, again, Learn, Plan, Succeed and Naviance test are due May 29th. Your finals, which are not going to look like the finals that you are used to, so please don't stress out, um, they're going to be June 2nd and 3rd. So we are encouraging teachers to not do a 50-question, multiple-choice final. We're encouraging teachers to do like a final, like, project, where maybe you present everything that you've learned, um, for this second semester. Um, or it's a, um, like a social-emotional check-in first, and then there's a section for, um, the content that is small and short, um, open notes, open notebook, you have a week to do it, but it's due on those days. So we're trying very, um, hard to be as flexible and as kind as possible during this difficult time. So those are the dates for your, um, uh, end-of-semester assessments. Um, and so, and they're all due June 4th. All late assignments, all, anything that you've got will be due to your teachers June 4th, because, um, your grades are due June 5th. Please, 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 don't wait to do everything and give it to your teachers, um, on June 4th, because then they're gonna have to spend two days grading everything and entering in it, entering it into the gradebook for you. So please try to get it to them beforehand if you can. And then our graduation list, um, will be finalized on June 5th. Got it, okay. So, um, some things that we've tried to do to, um, make things, uh, nice for you, um, the slide that we just had to skip, um, CPS is having their citywide graduation. Um, there is an image on there, I don't know why it's not coming up. Um, but, uh, I believe it's June 3rd, maybe it's on the next slide, I don't know.
Uh, Sunday, June 14th.
Sunday, June 14th, thank you.
At 1:00 PM Central.
And that's the one where Oprah's gonna be there, and I really, really hope that you guys all get a car. So, I'm crossing my fingers and praying for you. Um, so this is a website, um, that parents can go to if you'd like to get either a small banner or a large banner with pictures or without pictures. Um, you go to that link, and we'll be sharing this link for you in the chat. Look at Ms. Hayley on the spot. So there's the link in the chat if you'd like to purchase these banners for, um, your graduates and put those in the front of your house. Okay, they're so cute. Um, so yeah, so those are for you, those are some, some of the things that we're trying to do to make this better. Um, what's next? Oh, so the Chicago Tribune called and asked if we wanted to send some stuff into the newspaper to honor our graduates. So shout out to Ms. Hayley and Ms. Castillo, who wrote some really beautiful words. Um, this is one of the two things that are gonna be in the trib. So we, um, uh, once they tell us when these are gonna come out, I think these are June 3rd. Um, once this comes out, June 3rd, yep, that's, um, we'll be sure to share this with you all so that you can share it as well. So you can either get a printed newspaper or it will be online. So that's from us at Alcott to you all graduates, um, and that'll be in the trib. Next, graduation, okay, you guys ready? I'm so excited. So, um, many of you have asked, um, what the graduation fee paid for. So the graduation fee paid for every graduate's t-shirt, the rental of Northside College Prep High School, the flowers on the stage, programs, um, the rental truck for the flowers and all of the equipment that we had to bring from Alcott, as well as a senior party, um, and the food at the party, um, cap and gown, diploma cover, and medals. Um, so, oh, and your yearbook. I apologize, I didn't put that on there. So we'll add the yearbook on there. Um, and so when all the school closure happened and we were not able to gather, um, myself and Ms. Simons, and A. Bolden's mom, uh, who is the chair of our new local school council, um, is, uh, worked with me to look at about three, two or three different vendors for coming up with some nice graduation for you all. So, um, what we did was, is we kept your cap and gown, your diploma cover, and your medals for you. Um, and the other things that we would have purchased for, um, being together, we put into our, the virtual graduation. So the cost of the virtual graduation is $5,000 per school. So your senior graduation fees totaled $3,000. So to make that, um, difference up, Alcott's gonna be paying the remaining $2,000 for this ceremony. And so the next few slides I'm gonna go through about the ceremony and, um, uh, what we need from all of you so that your seniors can be, um, represented nicely. So the graduation fees are, um, mostly paid. We have a few folks who, um, have not, um, paid them yet. And so if you can pay the fees, that's the email to Mr. Cranly for paying the graduation fees. If you cannot, you can send us an email and we'll see, um, what we can do. But the graduation fees are, are optional. Um, this, I'm sorry, yeah, they're, because the graduation is, um, the privilege, not the right. You earn your diploma, the graduation ceremony is extra. So most everyone has paid their graduation fees, and we appreciate that very much. The few of you who need some help, um, you can definitely, um, reach out to us. So, school fees, um, I recognize that we had half of the school year, um, where we didn't use those school fees. So, um, but there are some folks that still have some unpaid fees from previous years. So, um, please email Ms. Lugardo to contact her about those school fees. If you, you and your family have experienced, um, hardship because of this pandemic, please, um, let us know, and we will work with you, um, on those school fees, okay? Um, Ms. Lugardo is the main office clerk. Um, so can somebody put Nancy's email in the chat, please? Um, and, um, graduation fees are to Mr. Cranly. Um, he works for Hert Jones. So, um, that's the graduation fees and where we're at in a nutshell. And, um, if there are no more questions in the chat, I'm really excited to keep going to tell you about the rest of the ceremony. Yay, okay. So, um, consent, um, is probably the most important part of this whole thing. This is the part that CPS's law department really was held up on, was getting these consent forms signed. So, um, the link is in the chat, um, for, uh, uh, a form that you can fill out, parents, and sign. This has to be signed by parents. Oh, can you go back? Thanks, sorry. Signed, okay, by parents, um, even if a senior is 18 or over. So some of, thank you. Some of the ways that you can do this is you can, um, we mailed a hard copy home this morning to all the addresses that we have on file. So if you get that in the next few days, you can sign it, take a photo, and send it to us. If, we're gonna also send you the document through either Naviance or through the chat. Um, you can print that document, you can sign it, you can take a photo of it and return it electronically. If we email it to you and you get it on your phone, you can also take a screenshot of it. And on iPhones, you, there's a markup feature, I don't know what it is on Android, but I'm sure you can edit it and sign your name to it, and then take a screenshot of that and then return that to us electronically. Or, um, there's a website that I just found a couple of hours ago that you can fill this out and sign your consent, literally sign it on your phone, and you can send it like, right now, right now. That is due June 5th. That is another non-negotiable from Chicago Public Schools. If we don't have a signed consent form from parents, we cannot include the student's face, name, likeness in the graduation ceremony because it's going to be public. Okay? Are there any questions in the chat about that? Nope, lots of links, thank you. Okay, I'm ready. So, um, we're gonna be sending everything to you via email. So, um, uh, many of you, we have your personal emails, there's still a few of you where we only have your CPS emails. We need, need, need your personal emails because CPS is going to block these other emails. We also suggest that you put these two emails in your, um, uh, uh, we also suggest that you put these emails in your contacts so that your, um, uh, email doesn't put them in your junk mail or block them or things of that nature. And yes, Ms. Heinz, I'm gonna get to that in a little bit, thank you for your question. Okay, next. So, a part of the graduation ceremony is they're going to say your name. They have professional name sayers, speakers. And so, um, the company asks that you submit your name pronunciation again by June 5th. So if you have a unique name that you want to ensure they say properly, you have to, um, record that and send that in by June 5th. Otherwise, they will do the best that they can to pronounce your name correctly. But if it's after June 5th, they will not accept it because they're gonna get started in, um, organizing our, um, ceremony. Next, please. So, um, the student content. So we are gonna add your graduation photo. We have everyone's graduation photo except for one student, and so we will be adding your graduation photo. If you don't like the photo, you can take another photo. I would prefer that you don't because then, uh, they'll all be cap and gown photos from the company, and they'll all be the same. But you will be able to pick up your cap and gown. So if you, you know, wanna beat up your face and put a big round circle Kardashian light and make sure that you get the perfect photo, then you can, um, put your professional photo that you take of yourself on there. And that also is due June 5th. But if you don't submit a photo, it's fine, we're gonna use the, um, your school, um, your school graduation photo, okay? Okay, next. All right, so, um, you are gonna be able to record a little video if you want. You don't have to, but if you record a little 30-second video where you say to your classmates, "We did it, class of 2020", um, we are gonna be moderating those photos and those messages for any typos, spelling errors, or anything that may or may, maybe, might be questionable. So please, um, that also is due June 5th, so that's in about a week and a half. Okay, next. Ms. Castillo.
I already did, did that not change?
Oh, no, I, oh, yeah, I did, oh my God, they all look the same, my bad. Thank you. Okay, thank you. So, um, we're gonna go in alphabetical order by last name. Um, if you didn't record a selfie video, that's fine. Um, but, um, anybody who did, they will, those will be in there. And so, and on the next slide, we've got a little example of what that, what it's gonna look like.
Oh, wait, hold on. I need to do this. This button. Can you hear the audio?
Yep.
Bethany Hopper.
Congratulations, class of 2020. I just wanna say thank you to all the friends that I've made, my mom, my sister, and my entire family. Congratulations, you guys.
Thank you. So, um, it's gonna be just like a regular graduation, the order of everything. Um, there's still gonna be speeches. Um, I'm gonna be doing the principal's speech, um, with Allison, um, even before the school closure. Um, oh, and, um, Allison and I are going to be introduced by Brian, one of our junior students. Um, seniors were invited to submit speeches prior to the school closure. Um, and we received a submission from Kobe Jones, so shout out to Kobe Jones. He is going to be welcoming everyone to our virtual ceremony. Um, and then we also have our valedictorian and our salutatorian, who, um, will be addressing the class, and they do the part where they say, "Move your tassel from one side to the other side", and woo, we're graduates. So, um, we'll have all of those speeches, and, um, that'll be a part of the ceremony as well. Next slide, please. So, it's going to be, uh, Ju-, Monday, June 22nd at 5:00 PM, and it's going to be, um, broadcasted, um, on YouTube. Um, I'm hoping that it'll be broadcasted on our YouTube channel. It's possible that it might be on the Hert Jones YouTube channel. Um, but either way, we will get you the link so that you can, um, have it in plenty of time. So hopefully you all can, um, watch it with your families in your home. Um, I've seen some folks, um, get like a screen and put it up in their garage. So people are in the yard, social distancing to be able to watch it. Um, we hope that it'll be really beautiful and really amazing so that you and your family can watch it and enjoy it together. Um, it's, we're really excited about it. So I hope that you, that you love it. Um, next slide, please. Um, so, some of you have expressed wanting to take pictures outside of Alcott. Um, so when you get your cap and gowns, um, there will be, um, this on the, um, on the marquee for you. Um, I would suggest, um, not picking up your cap and gown and taking the photo right away, because the cap and gown's gonna be all folded, um, unless you have a portable steamer or something that you can use to, to iron it out. Um, but, um, that'll be up until the middle of June for you all so that you guys can, um, go to the school and take pictures in front of the school if you like. Next, please. Um, those of you who are in OneGol, um, OneGol gives you all stoles. Those are those like fancy like necklace things that go over your graduation gown. So OneGolers, you'll be able to get those as well. Next. Um, Ms. Hayley, do you wanna talk about this state seal of bilinguacy?
Sure, thank you.
Yeah.
Um, the state seal recognizes the bilingual students. Um, if you have, if you're taking this test, you already know, um, I've reached out to you. Um, so thank you, I just wanna say thank you to all the parents who are practicing the Spanish exam this week. who are proctoring the Spanish exam this week. Um, you're going to find out in the next two days if the student passes. And if the student does pass, um, they're going to get a medal and a seal that will appear on their transcript. This is a great test to pass because then the students can write on their resumes and applications that they are recognized as bilingual according to state standards. Those who took the test with me before the shutdown, I'm still waiting on your scores as well. But thank you for all your support.
Awesome. Thank you. So, um, uh, there's a form that's on this that's just for the, for the students, um, for, because you have to have a CPS email for this. Um, but did I see in the chat, Ms. Campbell, did Ms. Simon say that they couldn't get their, that other, um, form to sign, the consent form?
No, it was just the form I posted. It was one that, um, I've shared with students. There's only a couple more students that need to fill it out. It's how I got their personal emails.
Got it, thank you. Okay, so this form that's here on this pickup and drop-off materials is for the students with their CPS emails. Um, I don't know where that random app came from. I must have added that later. Um, so, um, students are going to be able to go to school to pick up their items. What they have to do is make an appointment with Ms. Soto any day, Monday through Friday, from 8:30 AM to 1:30 PM. And they have to make an appointment because, um, we want to ensure social distancing. So we don't want five or six seniors coming at the same time and coming in to get their things. You're actually not even going to be able to come in the building. When she knows that you're coming on that day, she will go to your locker, get your things, get your cap and gown and all of your other things that we're, um, going to be gathering for you and will actually bring it out to you. Can you skip to the next slide, please? In addition to that, what we're going to make sure that we have ready for you when you come to pick up are your school pictures, including your baby photos, your diploma cover, your cap and gown. Um, a part of your graduation fee also includes an Alcott College Prep medal, um, your OneBowl stole, um, and your items from your locker. So Ms. Soto has been working hard in the main office, gathering all of that stuff for you and making sure that it's all in, in one place for you. Next slide, please. Um, so when you come, what you can also do is bring any books that you have. There are some kids that have calculus books that they need to return. Um, there are also calculators that some of you rented. Um, there are a couple of uniforms that some of you have to return. And any of you who borrowed Chromebooks need to also return those as well. What we'll also do is have a hard copy of the consent form if you come with your parent. So we're, we tried to make it a one-stop shop where you come to Alcott, you get everything that you need. Um, and you can sign that paper and get everything back and you can return everything. Um, one note about your yearbooks. Yearbooks are not ready yet because, um, the plant had to close down due to COVID-19. They had some folks, um, who were diagnosed or they had folks who didn't come in to work. So they were on a skeleton crew and were not able to finish the yearbook. So what we are proposing is that once the yearbooks come in, we don't know when they're going to come in, but it'll be sometime this summer. Um, homecoming is meant for alumni to return to school. So what we're hoping to do is in the fall, have your yearbooks ready for you. And then when we have homecoming, the class of 2020 can return, get their yearbooks, and you all can sign, um, your consent form. I'm sorry, you all can sign each other's yearbooks. So, um, and then we get to see you because we aren't going to get a chance to see you. So, next slide, please.
There is no next slide.
There isn't, there's it, okay. So I saw some questions in the chat. Um, who has speeches? Allison and I have speeches, valedictorian and salutatorian. Ms. Campbell, do you want to announce who the valedictorian and the salutatorian are?
Oh, um, I don't know if they're here.
Oh, okay. Well, then never mind then. Um, and then do we have to turn in all the cross-country track uniforms? Um, no, because Coach Tony is the coach and has the uniforms for the kids. So as long as the coaches have them, we're good. Um, yeah, and my, my, our regular graduation is about, um, is 60 minutes. My goal every year is 59 minutes and I make it every single year. So our goal is about 60 minutes. Um, I don't, I hope, hopefully it is not much longer than that because that's too much. Okay, so the form for parents to sign. Ms. Haley, can you put that link down there again for Ms. Hines? So that's the form for you all to sign. And, um, thank you, Ms. Hines. The link is right there in the chat for you. Um, you should be able to go and sign it right on your phone and I should be able to get it. So we hope that we have addressed all of your concerns. Um, I don't know about graduation pictures, but we will reach out to Ms. Anstadt, who, um, uh, gets our pictures organized for our yearbook and I will ask her. I don't think we will be able to because with social distancing, I don't know that photographers are prepared or equipped to have, um, face-to-face, uh, photo shoots with, um, uh, potential candidates. So Ms. Lorenzo, I'm going to say I don't think so. Well, when you say order, do you mean order more graduation pictures? Probably. I think companies are always willing to sell more stuff. Yeah, but take them, no. But I, yeah, order them, probably. Yeah. Okay. Yes, Melina, we are definitely going to do, post all of these links onto Classroom. You are correct. Do parents have to go with the kids? No, you, parents do not have to come with you to pick up your items. Um, but if a parent needs to sign that form because you didn't get it in the mail, um, and you didn't, Ms. Castillo, can you go back to the, um, Soto picking up items slide, please?
Uh, yes.
I'm sorry, you're not Ms. Soto. I was thinking Ms. Soto, Ms. Castillo, my bad.
Is that now?
Um, so, oh, good question. Um, so, picking up and dropping off materials, you can see here on the slide that you, we need you to fill out that form and we're going to put it in the chat. Um, we also, yeah, Nicole, we definitely thought about that with your locker numbers. So if you look here, you're going to make an appointment anytime between Monday through Friday, 8:30 AM to 1:30 PM. That's the time that Ms. Soto is in the building and that she will be available to get you your things. So, um, uh, if you don't remember your locker number, that's fine. We have a, um, document where we save everybody's locker number and combination and all of that business. Um, so don't worry about it, we got you. Uh, the other thing is about transcripts, yes. So your diplomas aren't in yet. Your, um, transcripts will not be final until after June 9th. So we are going to gather all of that. That's why on this, on this forum where it says pickup and drop-off materials, on that forum, you'll see that we ask you what your mailing address is because we want to make sure that we mail you your, um, diploma and your official transcript so that you have that in your hand. Okay? So, um, I think we are answering, I said the yearbooks, transcripts, diplomas, we're mailing those. Um, we know this is a really difficult time for you guys. We tried really hard to organize everything and to make sure that we got it all together for you so that you all could enjoy this time with your family. So we told Chicago Public Schools that June 9th was your last day, was, was your graduation day. So we're keeping that. We could have said, oh, well, well, there's no more graduation ceremony. Everybody's got to stay here till June 20th. But no, we said June 9th, so we're keeping it June 9th. So that's why we really need you to get all of this stuff in by June 5th so that we can rest, relax, and make sure that you guys have everything that you need for your graduation ceremony. Make sure you get us your personal emails so that after June 9th, we can still communicate with you in case something comes up with this ceremony. We want to make sure that we can communicate it to you. So if aren't, aren't any more questions, does anybody? Yep, anybody else want to add something?
I want, Ms. Moody, do you mind if I add something about the question, about final transcript?
Yeah, please.
The, so as Ms. Moody said, uh, you guys, this is Jennifer Hannah, the counselor. I can't see all you guys, but I wish I could see all you guys in person. Anyway, um, in terms of your, the kids' final transcripts, they're going to get a copy mailed home, as Ms. Moody stated. But if you're asking about final transcript being sent to the universities the, uh, kids will be attending, those will go through, uh, the electronic system, the EDOC electronic system. That's why the students have to request their final transcript in Naviance. If they don't do that, then I cannot send the final transcript. And I don't have the capability any longer in Naviance to go in there and put the request in there for the students. I used to be able to do that in the past, but CPS took that right away from us. So it's imperative that the kids go ahead and request that, uh, their final transcript in Naviance. Otherwise, it will not go to the university. So you'll be calling over the summer trying to get me to do that, but it's easier if you just have the kids take care of it then. So, um, feel free, email me if you have any other questions, you know, specifically about transcripts or anything. Okay? Thanks, everybody.
Thanks, Ms. Hannah. All right, Ms. Castillo, Ms. Haley, Ms. Campbell, anything else?
Um, I just want to reiterate that May 29th date, we said it like five times, here's your sixth time. Um, May 29th is really important because we can't stretch it much, any further due to the fact that everything has to process through CPS to actually make it on the list for graduation by that June 5th date. So like, there's this, there's this whole thing where we put your paperwork together and Ms. Hannah checks it, then she sends it to CPS. Then you, we have to wait for the answer from CPS and then we're allowed to say yes. So if we, if that's late and it's past that May 29th date, um, what ends up happening is we cut it really close and there's a chance that like, we don't get all of the things in in time. So May 29th is really important and I just want to stress that.
And I just want to stress that even though, um, classwork will be coming to an end soon, it is still super important to remember and, um, to remind your students and for seniors for you guys to remember to check your emails, um, your personal email, your CPS email, all of it because we are still going to be communicating to you for the graduation ceremony. If there's any other loose ends we need to tie up, all of those things. So just like, make sure that you don't ghost us or disappear once those like grades are entered on June 4th because there's still so much more to come. And I don't want you guys to miss out on anything or not be a part of anything because you didn't, um, you missed an email or something. So just make sure you're still checking stuff.
And even after all this, just know that we're all here. We're always here. Uh, we have students coming back even after they've graduated to asking for help with FAFSA's, asking for help with course schedules. No matter what, this team is here for you, um, to help you with whatever you need in the future as far as secondary goes.
Yep. Okay, so I'm appreciating all of the love in the chat. Thank you, Ms. Delgado. And you are right, we, I do have a great team. I'm a very, very lucky lady. So, um, thank you all very much for being here today. We will post this to our YouTube channel so that you guys can see it. Um, if you have anything else that you need. Um, you have all of our email addresses. Ms. Hannah added hers in there. Um, uh, we're here for you. If you need us, just reach out, okay, everybody? So if there aren't any more questions, thank you very much for everything. We love you, we miss you, and we'll see you soon. Bye.
Bye.